I think it's one of those joint payment bits. It's been about a few minutes, I'm not sure, there's so much going on. You need one of those little squares with the girls, "Action."
John Moore.
Yeah, that's what we mean.
Select board meeting take one?
We're going to, we're going to open this select board meeting at approximately six o'clock on September fifteenth. Athlete allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so who moves the motion to sign the warrants?
So who?
Do you have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
You have a second.
Okay, so let's.
While signing the warrants, make a motion to approve the minutes of September first. Select board meeting is ready.
All in favor?
Any old business we would like to discuss? Or just all new again?
Is there a request for the refund, for the money out, will be closed, is that, is that on your agenda itself? Oh, it's another business, oh, okay. Oh, it's not the current. There was a paper you showed me that had you had it worded. Oh, here it is. It's number four, right, that? Signed Safe Harbor Line of Credit Paperwork, is that it? Is that the location? Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about. Okay, no, no business. New business, paper talks right off the bat before we get to the files.
And let's hit this over with. This damn guy's been here too long. Next issue, annual edition will be out around November tenth. It's two pages from Quebec this year. A little bit of a highlight on the late Joel O'Brien that'll accompany the fire department picture that you've got hanging up in the hall over here. The other two photographs, it's a JV team from the high school back in the early eighties. And then Harold Bailey's helped me out with a brief story on the company store down in North Quebec that stands to this day.
Oh, the three stores.
Pardon?
The stores on North Quebec Road.
And that it, about three miles out from McFadden's.
Bob Jones. Yeah.
They're just got a brief history on it and who ran it last, who ran it first. So my proposal is for you to continue your ad. This will be the third year if you go along with it. The ad runs two forty-two, you get thirty-five copies of the six thousand we print. And your ad would appear on the page with the fire department group and Joel O'Brien's picture.
Shall we do the list?
I think we should.
Are you making the motion?
I would make a motion that we continue on with supporting this fine publication.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, I what?
I'm loving people dearly.
All in favor?
Thank you.
There you go. Enjoy.
I expect in about forty years that I'm in here, so.
Yes, possibly. All right. Gordinance update, okay, you're on, Suzette.
Oh, wait, you're supposed to do the public hearing first.
Well, we'll do it right now with the.
Public hearing right now.
Well, the general, G, ordinance update, now it's the public hearing. Sorry. Where it's not really on that side.
No, that's the select board meeting. Public hearing.
Did we?
No, but it's for the select board meeting.
Doesn't matter, we're here anyway. Okay, so we're opening the public hearing, thank you for coming.
If you haven't signed in, please sign in.
Yes, I'll sign in.
Nearly state update the general assistance pendings, which is important amounts allowed for income and oil power assistance, light assistance, and they update those every year. This year they have updated the general assistance ordinance. The town, the town, sorry, the town has had to, the department has to accept the new, it's a new agreement. It just changes, oh, sorry, I think I changed it, it was interested, anything in red is what was changed. It's mostly just informational. They put in the question for twenty-two MRS subsection for read blah blah blah. Index. Start off that, I'm not going to read it off, the whole page they took out. Crosswalk misconduct, refusal, appendix one was changed. That was appendix one, here they revised it, anybody want to copy their up here? Oh, misconduct, that's the changes that we, over here. They can be, they change every year. Example is twenty twenty-one, we run from October first to September thirty. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, one person can make a maximum of seven hundred thirteen dollars. Now, a person, one can make a maximum of seven hundred seventeen dollars. Change of that for funding for public rent, for unheated, no bedroom. It went from a hundred thirty-one dollars, oh, sorry, a hundred twenty-nine dollars to a hundred thirty-one dollars. They go by different levels, so that's just an example of it here. They update every year, you change them every year. That's the update on those, if you had any questions, you can always walk into the app. But copy of the ordinance, I can get to you tomorrow, a hundred thirteen, a hundred thirteen pages.
That's part of the heating, that's part of the heating systems.
It's ten dollars for an ordinance.
Ten dollars for an ordinance. At the cost of ten dollars?
Yeah, oh, sorry, it costs ten dollars.
I can put it on the website.
But, yeah, that's even better, if we made the, otherwise it's the website and it's free.
I have a, I have a binder that has the ordinance and, oh my God, it's like the original.
Original, so that, could we do that?
Maybe. And one binder, please, I just want to go.
Oh, are there any questions on the general assistance attendants update? Well, if there's no discussion, we need to make a motion to sign the general assistance ordinance adopted for the town of Quebec, why the motion for that?
I would make a motion that we sign this. Since this is all new to me.
It's, it's state mandated, so pretty much, we pretty much have to accept it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
If the state's willing, getting someone else to pay to run their, from their.
Yes.
Face for what it is.
So we have one bid, this is the payment for what?
Paying this. For, there's a piece on Blue Cove, most of it's on Blue Cove this year. Those are the bids for the.
For the interest, for like the one, the two million.
Yep. The interest.
So we just got one?
That's right.
County concrete and construction out of Columbia Falls. Estimated job town of Quebec, estimated number two thirty-eight, estimated date A one twenty-one. Long sum, see below, Crow's Neck. One thousand fifty by twenty, price twenty thousand, Blue Cove, seventy-four hundred by twenty feet, price one hundred and forty thousand. Main Street, School Street, nineteen hundred by thirty by twenty, fifty thousand. So what was the, our, what was the, was it in the paper?
Yeah.
Are these three places that were won, did they, did they?
They had a pre-construction bid with the public works.
What's that mean?
Means that they went out and showed them what was going to be done.
Oh, they had a pre-construction meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so do you think we should have any feedback from public works or just accept it? Accept it?
Yeah.
All right.
So what's the total? Do they?
Well, let's see, one ninety and twenty, so it looks like two ten, two hundred and ten thousand. One forty, plus fifty, plus twenty, as far as I know, it's still two hundred and ten thousand.
This is, I'd be confused with what's going on on Blue Cove Road where, I've seen Ricky and the guys.
They were doing prep work, they changed culverts and ditching, preparing for this.
Fantastic job they're doing.
Yes. So whoever, what shall we do with this bid?
I would go, we accept the county concrete bid. Up to Jack.
All in favor?
And they will be getting, they will finish this project by the end of next week.
Wonderful.
Wanted me to tell you that.
They're going to do this whole thing by next week? They're all ready to go?
Ricky had them all lined up.
Like a shoe in there, wasn't it? Well, it's not like they're beating down the door to come do this work, there's so much work being done by other companies on Route One and all that I think they've got their hands full, we want you to have them.
Yeah. Just as a point of reference, do you remember a few years ago, was it Crow, Crow's Neck Road? Somebody had sanded out there with, excuse me, big clunks of stuff that were giving people flat tires.
There's a trest bit.
Trest, that wasn't county concrete, was it?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, I don't know, mention who it was.
No, I didn't, I just didn't want to pass dispersions against inaccurately.
That's fine on that.
Okay.
This is a, this is a.
I want to slip it in. It's paperwork, it's, it's like, you know.
Okay, so where's the paperwork?
Paperwork, it's in here, that's for the bank.
So they just want permission for the two of us to sign it, you, town treasurer and myself, the two others working, okay, we've got three.
Well, they were supposed to have.
And add more lines.
Bank.
Okay. So we have to sign paperwork for five hundred thousand dollar line of credit for the Safe Harbor, so we need a motion to.
Some amount for that. Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Should we clarify or remind the public that, that the town, at a special town meeting last year, approved of five hundred thousand, but the selectman only went as high as three hundred thousand at the time for the line of credit. Now it's been discovered that we should go the full amount, so the town has already approved of this.
Yeah, so they'll be coming up in the next special town meeting, optimization for a million. We're not going to be able to do it with Will. We already have a bill for eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which we'd like to pay at once and then get reimbursed. So that's, we're waiting, we're waiting to pay that.
I have been asked several times, like, when are we going to see some activity out there?
Like a barge?
Ask Carol.
We should be breaking ground in June for the land, because it now has to do an official request for proposal. It's going out as a design build. The RP should be done by the end of the year and the bid, the bid should be awarded in April and at least the land portion should start in June and then the marine portion probably will not start till November because it's just when you're allowed to do things in the water.
Yeah.
Construction wise.
Yes.
On schedule, that's coming up pretty soon, any day now, we're getting, we've been given the last, the final draft of the contract and it's any, any day it's going to be showing up and we're supposed to have the funds committed by the end of the month. And I'm going to need permission to sign that contract anyway. So let's do this first. I have a motion that we sign the line of credit to five hundred thousand and Nancy's seconded it, all in favor? I don't think I have a motion.
No, Rachel.
Now, they, they're telling us that they can turn the reimbursement around as early as three or four days because it's direct deposit, let's hope so. That would all, that would be good. Because with the line of credit, you have to pay interest on the days that it's being used, just like a credit card. Is something greater we have to sign too?
I don't think so. It needs to be signed, but.
Well, you're going to have to put in.
I think if you have ten, there's a lot.
I don't, that is typically. Then all, I would just put a pass.
Where's on that?
Okay, I'm just testing what you've approved of this. Okay.
We'll do it or not?
We'll get it later. Okay, we're early now.
Talk about this line right on Safe Harbor dispatch.
Okay, okay, sure. So the town of Quebec select board would like you to authorize Suzette Francis to withdraw three hundred thousand dollars from the Safe Harbor account for the purpose of purchasing properties identified as map zero eighteen lot seventeen, map eighteen lot seventeen one, known as the Whippleau properties. And that's, of course, as soon as we get the notice to proceed, we can purchase that and we will not go to close until that, we get the notice to proceed, because we can't get reimbursed. But it has been written into the contract that we are purchasing, purchasing the property.
Okay.
After much deliberation and negotiation.
That important.
So I need a motion for that.
I would move that we sign the paper, okay, Suzette Francis to.
What do you mean, she won't delay for this month without knowing we're getting reimbursed?
And stick close to home, don't run away with it.
And what am I paying next week? And it does seem a lot of that, it would be put through a cashier's check.
Yes, you have to go to a close with a bank check. Do I get a second? All in favor?
And just to remind the public once again that this has already been voted on by the town approval to purchase these properties. Now is the time, it's been delayed, now we're, now we're doing it.
Nobody ever even came out here except one very strong woman who showed up from the environment, environmental section of the USDOT from Washington and came and looked at the property. Otherwise, everything has been by drone, Zoom, they've never even been here.
Wow.
So it's been very difficult to do all the work that was involved with all the permitting. Moving along, open bids for the, now this is another bank issue because.
This is for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
The two million dollar bids.
I solicited some banks for interest on the, on the construction.
And so the interest is going to be paid, we have to pay it, right?
It's covered by the grant. The interest will be covered by the grant.
So this is, this is one of the, this is like a bridge.
Yes, because.
Explain this a little bit to the, for the people.
The two million dollar loan that we got from Rural Development, USDA, they gave us the one point six million for the grant and then we had to borrow two million from them. They won't give us the funds until we've expended them completely. And so this is the money for us to pay the bills that will be coming in.
So is similar.
And then once it's spent, then they'll give us the money back.
But you're saying that Mandy Alver said that the grant will be paying the interest on this and I'm hoping it's the same thing for the Safe Harbor, that the grant will pay the interest. I have to talk to Mandy, Mandy, talk to Mandy about it. Okay, so we have banker savings, Bar Harbor and Machai savings. So the proposed fixed interest rate is one point one five on an as-need drawdown basis.
That's Bangor?
Yeah, that's Bangor. But it's more common. Oh, yeah, option two is the proposed fixed interest rate of one point two five. So I don't know which one would be better, let's just look at this one now. Tax exempt interest rate, I'm not sure what that means, two point two 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 presented for Harvard.
Two how much?
Two point two two. And Machai's savings is one point eight one. And is this going to be for, does Mandy think it will be spent within the first year?
Not completely, but a lot of it probably.
So. I would propose that these, as much as I think I understand interest rates and banking, I think it would be good if we ran this by Mandy and to see, and that we would come back in two weeks with, in other words, not, it might look good on face value, but when you read fine print, it might be better to go with one than the other. I don't feel that we're qualified to make that decision.
Good, good, good.
Do we have a second? Motion to table, do you need to? All in favor? Yes, but if you need us sooner for that, we'll regather. If you need us to get together sooner, but I really think Mandy and you, we can all help read it, the fine print. That's great, then we got three bids. Pick one that gives money, I guess. Coastal beach cleanup, September eighteenth to twenty-sixth. It's nice. Who's going to be in man?
We should be.
I think Deb Seavey is running that, right?
Yeah, yes. She brought the.
Yeah, she spoke about it at the women's club and all the information, bags, signups, all in the library if anybody is interested in doing it.
Who did it though? Who talked about it again?
Deb Seavey.
She's ordered, it's with.
Apple?
No, no, it's with Ocean Conservancy.
Ocean Conservancy.
It's for the, they have a week of beach cleanup and they actually collect data on the garbage that is collected and kind of do stuff with it. So Deb's the local person organizing it, so that's technically the week and all the information in the sign up sheet and the bags and everything supposedly is in the library and Deb's at our meeting.
So that's just informational, correct?
Yeah, it used to be Rudy Jordan's.
Which was Apple.
Yeah, yeah.
And they are, I'm sure, sponsoring the cleanup maybe in the spring, because this is the annual one. They tell people to use the dumpster, town hall.
Yeah.
Maybe that's why.
They're not here, I just thought.
Maybe that's why we needed to say that they could do that. So do we, if you want to vote for that, that they can use the dumpster or, it's understood.
It's understood, yeah, but I just reminded Jason, he might want a separate dumpster up here. He usually puts a bigger one up here for that. And in the past, I don't know if I did say that, he said in the past, any no-sew dumpster for these cleanups going to be used.
Yeah, she's telling people the dumpster.
Well, like, no tires, there's, there's a list of what you can't put in. You should put those on the side and do something different with them.
Hopefully that's all in the library. So we need to sign the special town meeting warrant, which will be posted. And it's also, this has to be posted.
It gets posted, but we'll, we've already run the ad that there is one.
Okay. So I don't know if you had a chance to review it, there's three articles, you know, one for the deputy for the sheriff's department that was discussed at our last meeting. One is to increase what we just signed, five hundred thousand to a million. And the other one is to ask for the twenty-five thousand for the audit and the interest that might be incurred from Safe Harbor. So if you have any questions, please send it to the lawyer, it's all done appropriately and.
So motion to sign the special warrant, town meeting?
Oh, yes, well, the lawyer said total estimated debt service of this line of credit is, and this is revolving credit and we have no idea of knowing what, like, it might be two hundred thousand for two days and then it'd be reimbursed or, we can't really, it's not going to go over a million because it can't and hopefully, and that doesn't have to, but some months it may be more than half a million. Because if you take twenty million, divide by three years, thirty-six months, you get more than half a million a month. It's just mind-boggling to me, but.
I've got to save those amounts from the bank.
So which principal and estimated interest is that, yes, and I think we probably need, we need some clarification, and you're going to fill that out at the meeting that night, okay? So with that being filled out for the meeting, can we go ahead and sign?
Might actually help, hoping it would be filled out before we post.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But we've got some time.
Okay.
I gotta have it posted by next week.
You made a motion, who made a second? All in favor? Are we having a public hearing for this before we go to the special town meeting? Are we able to discuss this, share that thing?
You can accept all of them.
I guess it was because the task commitment had to be done right away, that's why we had to do it right away?
And the county.
And the county task. Okay, airport, you're, you're baby, Renee.
All right, I created a little budget, it's an acti-cop from your packet, it's a spreadsheet. Put it in the back.
Is where?
These two.
Oh, there you go.
We had it on the agenda last time, but we didn't make it, which was actually pretty great because I was able to come up with some real figures. When we did the first phase upgrade of the airport a few years ago, there were some components that did not get updated and that was the runway lights, mostly that, the runway lights. We had purchased the approach lights, which are on the ends, but they weren't able to be installed due to our old wiring that is there. So that was put off for this second phase. So we're now at phase two, our electrician that has done all the band-aids he can out there, he's telling me you either got to fix them or get them out. It's like, you can't do anything more with the old, old wiring. He showed me a picture of them burned off in the ground, there's nothing left to patch. So the electrician that did all the upgrading last time, installing the beacon, the new radio equipment that makes them come on when the pilots key their lights. The electrician is from county electric, he did all that installation. And he works with other airports up north and he was able to secure the extra, the equipment that you guys signed with three thousand dollars.
And he has it already?
He does, yep, he went and picked it up.
Okay, great, great.
He's up in the county and rooted it.
Oh, good.
He provided an estimate to, for the rewiring with new wires and installing the eighteen runway lights and the twelve approach lights and the constant regulator that we bought from that airport. The quote that he provided for all that is twenty-seven thousand nine eighty. And that's with our public works providing the trenching for the wiring and we'll have to purchase backfill. I'm told that that thousand is maybe a little too generous on that, I'm holding. So the total project will cost twenty-eight thousand nine eighty and that's probably going to be less than that if I don't have to pay that much for sand. The Butler Foundation is the ones that footed the bill for the first phase. We contacted Mr. Butler and he initially said that he would pay for fifteen thousand of that. Contacted them today and Dick Tholomore and he's agreed to go to seventeen thousand. So I've also contacted some other frequent users of the airport for some other donations they're going to get back to me, this kind of, anything that we raise over will go back into the reserve. But our reserve as of today has eleven thousand seven twelve eighty-six in it, so we can, I'd like to get this work lined up, he can do it this fall, it would be completed this fall. So I guess that's my request tonight, is for you to give me permission to secure this, this project again.
Yeah, so you can get somebody to do any work and, you know, it's so hard to find a plumber, electrician, contractor, anybody that, to do anything because so many.
And he's going to bring the equipment, he went and picked it up and he's going to bring it.
I would, I would make motion that we thank Mr. Butler for his generous donation and that we vote to appropriate the two sixty-seven fourteen left and then if any donations come in for the other users, it goes back into the reserve. You have a second?
I'm second. The second part of my request is, a few years ago, the, there was, there's a reserve cap, a capital reserve CD that we have, a portion of that money was taken to buy the loader a few years ago. The interest from this CD used to be help funding the airport reserve. Twelve percent of that was going into the airport reserve and two years ago. of that was going into the airport reserve, and, uh, two years ago, it was decided not to do that anymore. I'm asking for that to be reinstated, that we, it's reinstate twelve percent of that, because that reserve was created with some money that came out of the airport. So this would help build back, this work's gonna deplete the, the reserve, and there's not gonna be much left for maintenance, unless we get some of those donations to come in.
We definitely need some.
I'd like to do that.
And definitely need to pursue people who use the airports donate.
Yep, I contacted three, and one of them was gonna start a GoFundMe.
Excellent.
That's on them, I just said, make them check out in town.
I contacted people like, the life-like people who use that.
I didn't, we just gave them fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred.
I know, I mean, yeah.
But one of them, somebody mentioned that.
Yeah, but, uh, can you, the GoFundMe place would have to be under, um, the county municipalities, is that?
We're not, somebody else would be, and then they can just give us.
To be a Lincoln on. I don't know, I don't know what the rules are for GoFundMe, but yes, hey, whatever, hey.
Whatever works.
I don't know, that information you sent us about the, um, recovery limits of sending that plan, so infrastructure was in there, does the airport qualify as infrastructure? Well, I think it'd be tied into the fact that life-like might use, you want. I mean, I'm just wondering if, maybe, you know what, like, maybe we, you know, would need to use the reserve money if, if those dollars, if that would be considered infrastructure under. But right now, we don't, we don't need, uh, we don't need about two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Well, I'm saying, maybe we wouldn't have to delete the reserve if we've gotta identify that recovery money, and it's limited where it can be spent, and one of the qual, one of the things that was identified was infrastructure, does the airport count as infrastructure? I think that's a, a conversation for another day, where the slot board can look at all the categories and we can draw, we can decide as a, as a group, what would be best, the money best spent for appropriately. I think that right now, there is a reserve for the airport, and I think we need to get on that.
So, can we give a motion for the?
They, uh, yes, I make a motion that we put the twelve percent of the interest back in the CD, back into the, a reserve fund, but I think your, your point is we'll take the Nancy. Where, where did it go two years ago, when it went out, like, and it was taken from, it went back into the general?
A portion of the principal went to buy, it was like, we'll say, a sixty thousand dollar CD, a portion of it went to buy the loader that we have now.
And what's one?
There's like twenty-six thousand left, so, a hundred percent of that is going back into itself, now we're gonna take twelve percent to the airport, of just the interest.
So, did we, uh, finish that vote on the?
No, we need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Renee, such a good job doing that.
You've earned your wings for another year.
Okay, now just one more thing for the St. Harbor, we are, we are actually getting the contract, Dr. Wood, within the next, probably before the next meeting.
Lovely.
So I'd just like to have a reiterated vote that I would be allowed to vote, uh, to sign the contract that we have.
Under hate, but yes.
Well, we've already, it means like a year, but it's been such a long time, it would be nice to have, there's new people on the board, so.
I hope that we, uh, support you signing the contract.
Okay, I'm a hundred years old, I get my age.
We need a little more than the foundation.
That's right.
That's right, it's always the cement mixer for Carol. We have a second. All in favor?
Yeah, yeah.
Signed sewer commitment, always fun.
Jason will have a bigger dumpster here for, for.
Sewer.
For us, for beach cleanup.
I didn't know, did they come up this time, because I got my bill?
Eighteen sixteen.
That is what it was last time.
You were watching.
Yeah, I worked the checks out, I'm like.
Yeah.
Okay, so, for May first, twenty twenty-one, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, for forty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Need a motion to go after the money there.
So, so moved.
Do I have a second? Go for the mother, back and, all in favor?
Oh, shit.
Yeah, right. So would comment.
Suzette had one more thing for, uh, other business.
There's a bill that was passed by the state that will increase sewer lien costs on properties and rental lien, um, if the toll was fifty-one dollars, just to put a lien on that has a, that's a municipal fee, perjurer fee, recording, discharge fee, and property fee, that is fifty-one dollars, the thirty-eight dollars, which is a recording and discharge fee, is the, which is the D to get those tolls, yeah, but the other nine-dollar municipal fee, one-dollar perjurer fee, and three-dollar property fee are told with thirteen, it's now gone to twenty-five dollars, so, um, I don't know exactly how the state wants it both out, you know, so much for the perjurer, so much for the property, so much for the municipal, but right now, I just put twenty-one dollars for the municipal fee, and it's all for the perjurer, and the dollar for the, uh, three dollars for the property, for anybody who is looking at, so, that's the lien total, that's the remaining sixty-three dollars on process of the way we go.
So could you, or could you just go through that again, there's, uh, the first figure, fifty.
Municipal fee right now is nine dollars, is the perjurer fee of a dollar, recording and discharge of the lien is thirty-eight dollars, that nineteen three one, and a three-dollar property fee, these are all set up states.
And so it's going up how much more?
Um, it's, I don't know exactly how it's gonna divide the additional thirteen dollars up.
So it's just going up thirteen more dollars?
Yes, you go from fifty-one dollars to sixty-three dollars.
And just for our information, when do you get a lien on your sewer bill, how long do you have to be in arrears before that happens?
Eight months after the bill is committed, the process starts.
So as of today, fifteen, this was committed, right, the sewer?
Yeah, so eight months from today, from this month, I stop the thirty-day notice, which that is a eight-dollar and thirty-three cent fee, because you have the certified mailing fee of seven thirty-three, but that change is in the post office.
And that's all tapped back on to the user if they don't pay the bill?
Yeah, they can all look back at the fee, so it's seven dollars, uh, sorry, eight dollars and thirty-three cents for the thirty-day notice, can give you the warning, then it's fif, that's either right now, fifty-one dollars, and I put a lien on.
So they have thirty days from the actual notice to pay all of bill, or any, like, everything too?
The oldest one, the oldest bill, you have to pay, I mean, you can owe, I think, you owe probably three or four bills at that time, you don't have to pay them all, you just have to pay the oldest one.
Okay, just, just for people to know.
And, yeah, and then when it's, when it's paid, sorry, when, if you don't pay it, after, what's it, seventeen months, fifteen and a half, it's called a, uh, foreclosure notice, it's forty-five days before someone, before I go, before I go, I send out notices, and that costs ten dollars and thirty-three cents.
And they still have, once you get a foreclosure notice, you still have time to pay for it?
Yeah, forty-five days, yeah.
And at that point, you have to pay it all?
You have to pay the, that, you only pay all the bills you owe, but just that one bill, you owe eight all, and that would be the lien fee of fifty-one, the eight thirty-three for the, you know, thirty-day notice, oh.
So, the fees are ta, are definitely cumulating.
The fees are almost as much as the sewer bill.
Right, so we're pulling people to try to pay the sewer bill.
What?
And Suzette, last work to do, she's overwhelmed anyway, right? Comes here at six-thirty every morning, working overtime, but not paid overtime, just on her own personal time, she comes to work.
Oh, and this new, uh, fee.
I've never beat you, yet, I go by there and there's your car.
Yes.
Six-thirty in the morning, oh, Suzette's working.
This new law doesn't affect, um, eighteen about four weeks, so.
So you don't need them to vote on anything you're just announcing?
No, I would just ask questions.
I get that, I get that, because I was, I have to vote on it, it's not like we have to, state.
Well, uh, now, public comment.
Paul? Came up there on July eleventh, I talked to Jim Clark, I booked my taxes, as I talked to people before that. I went into his office, he went, John Renee, said, this is John, I haven't heard one thing back yet, whether I'm gonna get reimbursed on my taxes from twenty-eighteen up, or anything. That was in July, here, here, September. I should've had some notice somewhere, from somebody saying whether I am or I'm not, and I've never received nothing from nobody here. I don't understand why this drags the way it drags here.
Well, 'cause he's part-time, he works part-time.
But doesn't he have to get back for some?
It doesn't matter, if it's part-time, full-time, or whatever, July to September, it's what it's. You know, I've spent more time up here since you fellows on the board, not this way to here, the two fellows on the board gave my land down there to the state. I went to court on it, and the county commissioner says it's not the state's fault, it's the town that will back for not notifying you. I hired a lawyer, but I fought for him, and it cost me a lot of money. And I don't even get the decency to find out whether I'm gonna get a reimbursement on my taxes, but I could go after the town and sue you fellows, is what I was told from the county commissioner, that you fellows in the wrong. There is something wrong with this town here. You fellows have gotta start communicating a little better, put the office in hand, letting them know it wasn't what I wanted. Well, Jim Clark came at me just like a bear, and then I shut the door and he reopened it, and I shut her again.
Well.
And then he went and got Renee.
The only, um, thing I can say to you, Paul, is I, uh, I'm sorry that this has happened, and if we hadn't been no, notified that you were gonna be on the, come to the meeting tonight, I think we would've definitely had Jim Clark here to answer why he hasn't responded to you. Unfortunately, we don't know why Jim hasn't responded, and this is the first I've heard of, I, no, this is not the first time you've told us.
I bet this is the first time you've heard of him, I can guarantee.
But it's, I had not, I did not know anything about, Renee did not tell me, nor did Jim Clark tell me that you came and spoke to him, so.
And it's time for you, Paul, to get a little better communication together here.
Yeah, yes, I agree with you, you're, you're one hundred percent.
We're not throwing tax dollars away here for nothing.
You're one hundred percent right, we should have.
I'm getting tired of this.
Paul, I would like to say something else, back to where your property was confiscated by the state.
That's correct.
Several of us contacted the state, Renee being one of them, saying that we feel that this was in error and gave reasons why, and I think I talked to you about it at the time, that it didn't make sense for those kids to walk next to your house, that it should be on the other side of the street, and we went through that, and I think a lot of us agreed that that was an error. We sent it to the state, the state said, we're sorry, but it's been done, we're not gonna go back.
They said it could not go to a parking lot, is what they said, and yes, we did ask to have it put on the other side of the street.
It doesn't make no difference, you fellows did not notify me at all when this was put in, careful.
There was, there was more than one public hearing, but whether you didn't know about it, I definitely think if I was you, I would, would've wanted to know absolutely.
I had to go to court lunch because of you yo-yos up there. You guys cost me over six thousand dollars to be exact. I know, it's nothing to you, because it's not out of your pocket, I understand that.
Well, it's a cross.
You know, it's a big difference whether it comes out of your pocket or my pocket, and you know it as well as I do. You fellows wouldn't like it, and I don't like it, and I am damn sick of coming up here and arguing with you fellows over taxes that, since July eleventh, when I, I actually got the call on July the seventh, and I'm still haven't heard a thing from nobody, because it's just a, oh, well, just forget it, it's no big deal.
So, Paul, it, was it, um, something like three feet by six feet, the little square there that they put the landing pad on?
You tell me what it was, you fellows wanted to talk.
Well, I don't have it in front of me, but it was a very small piece of.
Very small?
Yeah, well, I, it's a, it's a size.
Seven feet in and thirty-eight feet down is very small? And I owe the last and a quarter of makeup.
The state explained to me that there was an easement put on there so that they could do the work to put the landing pad in, and once the landing pad was put in, that the easement was removed, but I may be wrong, but that's the last explanation I got from the DOT.
At the beginning of it, they took the seven feet in and thirty-eight feet down.
And they have not, we have not removed that.
And we had to get rid of the shop, because if the main DOT and the state ever follows the rules like everything else, we probably still have it there, but they don't, everything's a joke, and I'm getting tired of the joke being on Paul Case there. You fellows would feel the same way if you was in my spot.
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow, so, uh, Jim is working tomorrow, so.
I'm not coming out, because I've dealt too much up here now.
Well, I think he, he owes you a letter of explanation, so, we will get that for you.
I've had enough.
It, it will be done tomorrow when he comes in.
Yes, I've had enough.
He used to have a board of such, and he's right, he's been committed.
Well, he's gonna need to do this, because it's like sixty days.
I was good enough not to take you fellows to court and sue you, which I could've very easily, because you fellows messed up on it, and I hope to God you fellows never do, and never stunt like this ever again, to anybody.
We'll get you a letter from Jim Clark tomorrow.
It's quite a agony, to be honest with you. And I'll say one more thing here, instead of us going for a police cruiser, maybe we'd better look at a new dump truck, because we need something stolen right around the corner here. Let's not have another special meeting to, to back and draw another twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars up for another truck, because you fellows know the trucks are no good, you always liked it.
Don't need another dump truck.
What?
We don't need another dump truck in this box.
Yeah, I know, it's no good.
So, uh, we'll expect you, uh, we will get a letter to you tomorrow, and we'll expect you at the special town meeting on the twenty-ninth to weigh your opinion on the deputy expenditure.
No problem.
And I'm sorry.
Really?
I am.
Because I, like I said, I've dealt with this for the last three years here. It's on, it's off, it's on, it's off. It's getting ridiculous for a taxpayer to have to keep coming up here and fighting and chewing.
Definitely needs an answer to this tax abatement.
Mm-hmm.
That we're gonna get you, and if we might need a special with taxes assessors meeting tomorrow afternoon, so can I get a list to you of your year for that, to approve of the abatement? We'll get it straightened out tomorrow, at least the tax part of it, tax abatement. That's, and thank you for coming up and telling us.
Well, it should've been, while we were counting before that.
Yep, should've. Any other public comment?
I don't know if consider a comment or a question, I don't, I don't know how this I can do. Is there any plans to maintain the cemeteries for the rest of this fiscal year?
What does that mean?
All we do is mow.
Mow, is there any claims to mow them, or this high?
We have one mower right now.
Oh, one person, one mower, have you put out, have you put out any job after, job?
We did at the beginning.
Or whatever, yeah, because when I came in, you said you were all set, that's why I'm just asking. And I'm more asking.
We had training at the time.
I know, they work at the, the big box store that, uh.
No.
I believe David's down there.
Two of them were students, and now they've gone back to school.
So is there any way to hire, does some of them for the last mowers of, not, not hire, like, not a person, a company? I guess there's probably only, what, one or two more mowers left this year?
I'll have to look at the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I just didn't know how it worked, how your fiscal year worked, does your fiscal year work from Jay?
And actually, we're.
I'm sorry.
Could you tell me, tell us who you are?
I didn't, like, again, I didn't realize the procedure, right, I'm a, I live on two case drive.
A what drive?
Case, in front of the Weston Deck Water Tower.
Oh, okay.
I've been here for four years now, so, and I usually don't make complaints in, or anything unless I offer to assist in a situation, and, and there's been people online complaining about the, the.
Which cemetery is it?
All of them basically look like crap, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's let out. I've gone down, I have a friend that has a family plot, and I believe it's the Olsen one that was behind the quarry garage, you have one on the right that.
The one on the right.
The one on the right Dallas takes care of, the one on the left, I believe. The one on the right Dallas takes care of, the one on the left, I believe, is the town one. So, I was just curious if it was gonna be taken care of before that and if it's for next fiscal year, is there a committee to, that's set up for allotting funds or whatnot? Because you're not gonna get any, you're not gonna get any kids coming in here for twelve dollars an hour and I take to work at McDonald's or seventy. And using volunteers and having people maintaining their own plots, it's uneven, what happens if somebody bumps into a stone and damages it? I don't know how the graves.
Have we expended all of our, um, budget for the cemetery mowing? I mean, I think we're in a position that everyone, every restaurant and every business in town is because it, they're all sitting around getting unemployed.
Yep, no, I.
And, uh, we can't get any, nobody can get anybody, not just the town, nobody.
What was, does any, any of the hourly wage was to be competitive?
Are you, are you volunteering to do the rest of the mow?
I'm not gonna volunteer, maybe I'll do it, or you give me a, whoever will do it.
Not volunteering, but I'm saying volunteering to apply for a job to do it.
I did it once before and I, they were, you guys were all set.
We haven't hired anyone.
Yeah, you have to put it out.
We only hired at the beginning of the season.
I think this man was.
Yes, but we, yes, but we.
No, I have a job, I'm retired and I work, I mow at night for somebody in town. I just think it's disrespectful the way the cemeteries are.
Well, are, are there funds left?
She said yes, okay, I said yes, I just answered.
Because right now, if you take a drive through, it's very strapped, some people will maintain a road because their stone is there. What happens if this person bumps into somebody else's stone or damages it with something? Or somebody twists their ankle taking care of it, whose insurance covers that?
Well, that's a good point, are you insured if you're mowing?
What's that?
Are you insured?
I work for a person that is, yes, I do.
Okay, so, did you wanna, would you ask him for?
I'm not, I'm, this, this is more information.
Ask him for a bid to, to finish the, the, the last.
I'm not doing that either, I wanted to know, I came down here for the understanding process.
I guess the process is we have to advertise again, correct?
And that wouldn't be probably that big bids like you were doing on everything else where, no.
No, no. We hire you for twelve dollars and fifteen cents an hour.
That's, that's why you don't get anybody.
Well.
But you're, you're, you're a good dad.
Yeah, that's, that, that, that's, that's what I'm getting at, I don't know how, where I was told.
Sounds like, well, it's all, it's all.
Don't complain unless you go to a meeting, I'm at a meeting.
So, the process, the process, you know, started earlier in the spring. Budget committee meets a few times with the select board and literally, like, there's a line item for mowing in the cemetery, I can't tell you what that figure is.
I believe it's seventeen thousand dollars for wages, I looked at the, uh, the, the thing, sixteen to seventeen thousand.
I remember, but I mean, you know, it's, it's broke down to, you know, in the last couple of years, there was more town people who could do it, but I mean, you know, there's X amount of dollars this year. I know the ad ran and nobody applied and then there was like one person and then they didn't come and then we've got a couple, one high school kid came and then he bought another friend and we had.
Did you guys utilize Arise one time this summer?
Yeah, that was at the beginning before we could get.
Now, who covered, I mean, this is just a educational for me. Arise, do you guys cover, say, if someone from Arise twists their ankle, gets hurt, who covers that, the town or Arise?
They provided their insurance.
Oh, that was, again, it's just a curiosity question, as, so if they knocked over a stone, which are expensive, who would have covered that?
Who covers it if we would knock it over?
Uh, you guys do, because it's your property. That's, that's another question that I was gonna ask.
Citizens.
Okay, now, does a citizen buy a plot, I don't know how it works in that, does a citizen actually buy a plot?
We inherited it, we, we inherited the cemetery.
Okay.
The funeral homes back here in the day used to own them and managed them.
Okay.
Well, some along the way, they didn't do it anymore, so the town inherited it.
Okay, are they close to new, I don't know what you call it, new citizens at this point, or?
No, they are all full.
They're all full, okay, I was.
The only open cemetery that, unless they have a plot, that has.
Those previous projects through the.
Is Joann's. There was, Joann's, yeah, Joann's and Dallas is, are the ones that are at.
Because, like, usually when you deal with a cemetery, when you buy a plot or whatever, it's, you get indefinitely mowing and maintenance and whatever, not this town, okay. Again, I'm just asking, asking questions, so, will be a budget meeting regarding cemeteries coming up for the next fiscal year or are we already in twenty twenty two's fiscal?
Probably March.
That'd be March.
Yeah, March of twenty two.
So, that would be for twenty three's fiscal budget?
Yeah, yeah, starting July first. So, from now until June thirtieth, we'll, we'll be mowing in the spring, for sure. This budget will cover that part of the season.
And the town provides all the equipment and whatnot, or?
Just a push mower and, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
And the weed whacker.
I was just wondering if there's special training or whatever too, because you're beating stones with, uh, the trimmer line and, and all that stuff and you s, I was down there looking at somebody's paint cones, they're beautiful. But if you bang any of them, you're gonna etch corners or, I don't know if there's special training for the maintenance or?
Not that I, I don't know, I'd have to check the public works, they always see that department.
Are we?
Yes, thank you, um, as, I've done eighteen graves at the Bayview and I can tell you that my concern is that the mowers need to be mulching mowers, not throwing the grass onto the graves. It's haped and pracked and whatever, but there is a protocol that we don't clean anything that's leaning or could, it's loose and whatever, so, um. I think we need to establish some kind of rules and one of them is the use of the American flags are everywhere. And if they were consistent on one side or the other, back, front, whatever, would make it so much better for the guys mowing. And I'd even recommend a, a spike down wherever that is to put that post into because those get damaged and they're very expensive to replace. But for sure, we need some kind of public informational of just don't lean or touch a stone period and the mowers need to understand that it's tilted, be very careful. But I'm very concerned about that grass being thrown against those graves. So, mulching would be great, another little problem to add to the, thank you.
Yes, I think if we hire a cemetery mower, they should have a little bit of rules and definitely some kind of little outward explanation of how to be careful with the gravestones. Because we've done an amazing job, by the way, the Historical Society and everyone who was volunteered to fix those gravestones, every time I drive by, it looks better. It's just wonderful, it's such a wonderful thing you're doing, thank you for, for doing that.
Well, it's just exciting, you cannot believe not being able to see it all and then you can read the little tiny inscription at the bottom, it's just, makes your heart, love it.
Any other public comment? Uh, I'm gonna turn the motion to the judge.
Your judge.
Do I have a second? All right, all in favor?
Let me stop the cameras.
So, what time tomorrow would be a good time for us to meet so that we can, uh, meet as assessors, because he's gonna need to do this tomorrow.